At this time, we will bring to order our first session for March fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen. If everyone could please either silence or turn off your cell phones. And when we do that, we'll stand and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Denise, can we have any questions?
We shall see if it or not, we have no changes today.
I can.
Well, our first item on the agenda is incredibly great honor to be doing this morning. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Winters as well to speak on this. But we have in our midst, we're trying to today honor someone who has provided community service in many facets for a number of years. This person was a former county commissioner here for a good period of time and did a lot of groundwork for why we're the county we are today. But this award is specific today for her leadership and involvement for over twenty-seven years in the Lake County Road Advisory from nineteen ninety to two thousand and seventeen. And I will let Commissioner Winters say a few words as well before we do this.
I didn't know I had to speak, but this is pretty easy to speak to. Kit Collins is the name that's iconic for Lake County and her family. From business to county commissioner to road advisory to just being a community partner. I could say it's without saying, but we're going to say we need more people in Lake County like Kit Collins. Kit, he was commissioner before I came on, mentor to me as I was sitting out there running. The basis that you set along with other board for us to be able to continue on is just incredible. Your business skills, your community skills, and on the road advisory itself, your dedication to good infrastructure and importantly, the good infrastructure that we have in Lake County for economic development and so on. You always work with a vision and we truly appreciate that. And we hate to see you step down from the road advisory, but we also appreciate the number of years you was there. So thank you very much, Kit.
Yes, and I will just add a couple of quick comments before we come around. As Commissioner Winters was talking, the dogged determination. She mentored me when I first became a county commissioner a little over ten years ago. I know before I took office, Kit and I got a chance to catch up and gave me some sage advice specifically about what we're making. They worked as a board back when Kit was on the Board of Commissioners to get a reserve built up. And that stuck with me like glue that protect that reserve, protect that reserve, protect that reserve, because if it goes away, there is no other money. So, oh, great, Patsy's able to join, so I guess.
I mean, like I said, we can talk all day long, so I just. I've had the honor in the past of speaking for some of the benefits that Kit has done. I mean, you can't help but say it just goes so far. It's county statewide, and so thank you, Kit, for your time.
Thank you. Can I just say, I don't know if you've commented, Jane O'Keefe, that all that money that we were able to keep those roads going with, she really put the best foot forward. And I was just kind of the helping hand. She was the one that went to Washington so many times with young family.
Yeah, you bet. Okay. It's a small token of our appreciation. It's a small token of our appreciation, Kit, but Jimmy's going to want to get our photo here soon.
She should be happy about that.
Yeah. Can we put our arm around her? Three, two, one. All right, thank you. Thank you. A special lady.
We even pulled up the meeting minutes from when you were appointed.
Oh, really?
Yes, Denise does all of the work on these and I always mention, but yes, she did. She did all that research, so.
And so we haven't found anybody to replace you because you're so hard to replace. So if you have any recommendations, you go ahead and try to get them to apply.
I can still think, but I can't hear very well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, yes.
Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is a timed item. It's at nine-ten, so we're going to wait just a few minutes in case anyone else is planning on showing up at nine-ten. And we'll go down to, Beth's going to be coming over.
She's going to come at ten.
Okay.
I don't know if there's time to really touch base on anyone, if you could do liaison.
That might be the best that's going to do right now.
Liaison. Well, the liaison up the ad is going to do Commissioner, I'd wait for legal counsel tomorrow. Probably on our nuisance stuff, so I'm going to hold off on that. So with that said, I guess to do a little bit of tag team with Denise, we had our vehicle committee meeting the other day. We're working on some things there. We won't bring everything forward at this time, but parking was one thing that we talked about and everything. I'm going to sit down with Denise and Dave maybe as early as today or maybe tomorrow and look at our parking lot out here and maybe do designated parking for county vehicles. There's spots for nineteen rigs out there and designate county rigs to those spots so that we get the parameter around here, parking for the public and for the businesses and take the county vehicles other than some of the sheriff's rigs over there so they're designated. So they always have that parking and it keeps the street parking for businesses and the public. So that was some of our discussion. I'd ask for that to come forward during the vehicle meeting. We also have the parking lot over, the Schmink parking lot. Not real conducive as a business use of that. We need to keep that for museum parking, but we might have a little overflow there. We also talked about them, Pound Yard, the parking there, and that we probably should get the vehicles off of the road department and try to find places for them. So it was good discussion. I don't know, Denise, if you have anything further to talk about that. The rest of the vehicle stuff will come during budgeting time where there's a full board update, recommendations. But as far as the parking side of that, I think we've had enough people question now since we relocated the adult corrections over here and that added about eight vehicles, four, five county graves plus the employee rigs. Those ones, we need to look at, need to do something. So any suggestions you could give to Denise or Dave?
Okay, sounds good. Well, it's nine-ten, so we're going to go ahead and get started with our Klamath-Lake Forest Partnership.
And we have four people contributing to the presentation. Would it feel okay if we put the mic here and then just stood and swapped?
We've got an empty chair up here, too.
Can we make decisions?
There's some, the word "some" will pass to you. If everyone could, maybe you could introduce everybody and they could introduce themselves when they come up. Really appreciate you being here today.
Thank you. So we have four people contributing to this presentation, myself. I'm Amy Marcus. I'm a biologist with the Fremont-Wineymouth National Forest. And then we have Daniel Labelle, and he works for OSU Extension as a forestry agent. We have Kale Graves with Oregon Department of Forestry. And Max Corning with NRCS here in Lakeview. And then we also have two of our really key partners in all the work that we're doing, Marcy Schrader and Kelly Carlson. Marcy's with the Lake County Watershed Council and Kelly's with Oregon Department of Forestry. And they're here for moral support because they help us a lot with everything that we have going on. So the Klamath-Lake Forest Health Partnership has been doing a lot of really great work just in the last year or two, and we thought we were due in coming here to give you a presentation on all of the great things that we have going on. This is a nonprofit partnership that started in the early nineteen nineties, so they've actually been around a while. And their mission today is really similar to what their mission was when they started about twenty years ago. And that's to facilitate restoration work on public and private forest land in both Lake and Klamath Counties through education, outreach, and partnerships. So we'll talk really briefly about why forest health is an issue in Lake and Klamath County. I'll make that really brief because I know none of that is new to either one of the commissioners here. Then Daniel's going to talk about the North Warner Project right here in Lakeview and how we feel that that's really a great model for how to do landscape level forest planning and implementation in Lake and Klamath County. We'll talk a little bit about some prioritizing and planning that we're doing across the counties. And then Kale's going to talk about the Good Neighbor Authority and a lot of the great work that we're doing between Oregon Department of Forestry and the Forest Service. And then we'll end by talking about the Farm Bill, Insect and Disease CE Authority that the Forest Service is using in partnership with Oregon Department of Forestry. And then Max will end the presentation by talking about partnerships and how NRCS is a partner in all the work we're doing. So forest health is really an issue across Lake and Klamath Counties, and they're really important resources for a lot of different reasons. For watershed health, it provide wood to the mill, which helps our local economy. This is a photo here of Collins Mill right through in Lakeview. We have livestock permittees that are grazing on our forests. A lot of people recreate across our forests and they also provide really great wildlife and fisheries habitat. So definitely a very important resource. These photos here were taken, they're actually in Klamath County on the Shamalt Ranger District, and they're photos of the exact same location. And it's a really great depiction of how our forests have changed over the last hundred-plus years mainly due to fire suppression. And the black and white photo is really more representative of how our forests looked historically. They were open forests. We had frequent low-intensity fire that would burn through our forests and keep the understory clean. We did not have a lot of shrub or duff or downwood, so not a lot of fuels on the ground historically. And then mainly due to fire suppression, our forests have grown more. We have a lot more trees per acre. We have a duff layer that's, you know, sometimes a foot or more deep. And because of those changes in forest structure, this leads to unusually large and severe wildfires or insect and disease outbreaks. This can definitely affect the social and economic values that I mentioned earlier that the forests provide for us. And so we have some choices here of managing our forests and trying to bring them more to that historical condition, which really significantly reduces those risks of natural disturbance. Or if we don't do anything at all, we really leave them at risk of disturbance. So here are some fires that we've had and insect and disease right in Lake County. A couple of key points here is that we've experienced three different disturbances that were over a hundred thousand acres. Both Berry Point and the Winter and Toolbox Complex were over a hundred thousand acres. The lower right-hand corner is a picture of the Toolbox Fire. The label, for some reason, came off the slide there. And then the red and dead Lodge Pole bark beetle event was over three hundred thousand acres. And then the Withers Fire, Withers Fire writes out of Paisley, happened last summer. That was an overly huge fire, but it burned right up to the community of Paisley and definitely had an impact on that community. So I think a couple of key points here is just the fact that our disturbances are getting much larger and more severe than they were historically. I mean, even I think about early in my career, twenty years ago, a big fire was three thousand acres. I mean, we had the Alder Ridge Fire on the Silver Lake Ranger District in nineteen ninety-six. It was three thousand acres, and at the time, that was considered a huge fire. And now these larger fires are just becoming much more common. We hear about it on the news all summer long. And I think the other key message here is that especially in Lake and Klamath County, our forested resources are a mix of private and federal lands. It's intermixed through the entire county. And so this isn't an issue that we can tackle independent of private lands. We can't just, we, the Forest Service, can't be just focusing on managing of the federal lands, but we need to be working to work with private landowners as well and do it in a holistic fashion, partnership fashion across federal and private lands. So with that, I'll turn it over to Daniel.
And I want to thank the commissioners for the interest, support, and for this opportunity to give an update. Thank you for that. And based on what Amy was saying, yeah, if, as a partnership, Klamath-Lake Forest Health Partnership, we sat around the table. And one of the real benefits of having that partnership is the dialogue that goes around and the opportunity to overcome any barriers to working together if you're sitting around a table talking to each other. And one of the discussions was, well, where can we work together? And the decision was made on where to put the effort based on one of the biggest managers in both counties, Forest Service, NEPA-ready projects. So we thought, well, here's an opportunity in the North Warners. Forest Service has progressed this far with the NEPA. And we have, you see the crosshatch around that green polygon is the Forest Service. And the crosshatch around that are the private land ownerships. About thirty thousand acres of private land about, we started with seventeen landowners and ultimately came down to about thirteen or fourteen that bought into working together. And so we looked at that landscape collectively and with Marcy and the Watershed Council, with Kelly and ODF, and Max and our other partners from Klamath and Lake County both, what an opportunity here. Can we do it? And so we came up with a process last year. And we, the step-by-step process was essentially to look at those private land ownerships. And private land ownerships in general really don't have the detailed information or almost any information on resource that the Forest Service has. So we needed to start with an equal starting point. So we, thanks to a generous contribution from the Oregon Fish and Wildlife Service of about forty thousand dollars, we looked at that, hired a former student at Oregon State to do a map and inventory project of all of the private land, bring everybody up to the same communication standard of what resources need, what, where, when, and how. And we did that. Hired, part of that money went back into the local economy. We hired Mary Foster to do the ground truthing. And we came up with a series of three scaled maps to identify the forest resource, cover class, age class, and density. And then we, Mary went out to validate that. And within four months, we had a completed map and inventory of all thirty thousand acres surrounding the Forest Service. We used that as a basis to come up with a diagnosis of what the health priorities were or wildlife habitat priorities were, or forest resistance priorities were, or even grazing and pasture underforest were. So we assigned priorities to all of the properties and acres surrounding that land and came up with a final picture of what the landscape needed, property by property. We used that as an outreach and we conducted workshops and we outreach to all the landowners. And thank goodness, a lot of relationships have already been built thanks to Marcy and Kelly and Max and others. But we grouped together, used that mapping and inventory output and prioritization and prescription recommendations as a means to draw them into the process and assist them in meeting their own goals for their own property. And by doing that coincident with what the Forest Service was doing in their projects, we came up with the best of all worlds, an economy of scale that allowed each landowner to tap into the resources being used for thousands of acres on their hundred-and-fifty-acre parcel. So, and then we looked at, oh, I do this. And then, so these are the steps we used. So we identified the property. We used the mapping and inventory simultaneously with private property outreach. We did workshops. We did Master Within Manager course. We educated, we reached out, and we informed. And we used hard information to build a case that something is needed out there. And so we, and then based on that, we cooperated with ODF, with NRCS, the Forest Service, and brought all of these resources together. Whoops. What did I do? And in addition, once we had a landscape picture of what the priorities were, of what the needs were, both on the upland in the forest, and we collected, Mary collected, one of the best field specialists I've worked with, she went through every land ownership and she collected information on weeds. She collected information on Aspen restoration, on mountain mahogany restoration needs, seeds, meadows, just, we had a complete inventory, resource inventory of all those private lands. And that enabled us to not only reach out to the landowners and incorporate and look at implementation ultimately, but also to submit a big picture view for Joint Chiefs Grant potential. And again, thanks to your support, we got it. And look at fuel supplemental funding, and we got it. To look at Title II rack funding, and we got it. OED funding, we got it. Sage rouse. And so with the initial generous grant of forty thousand dollars from Fish and Wildlife, we came up with a total of one and a half million dollars to offset costs for private landowners and two and a half million dollars to assist the Forest Service. So we're looking at within a little over a year, which is unheard of anywhere, a cooperative, collaborative, cross-boundary effort at managing the landscape. And now we've got the money to put the projects in place in about a year and a half. If we can start seeing those projects implemented, and I believe we will start this summer and seeing the thinings and look at slash disposal and look at habitat restoration. If we can do that, then there's no reason it's not going to happen. And that is the success, to actually see a difference on the ground for, to lower fire risk and to improve forest health, improve wildlife habitat, and improve grazing and pasturing underforest. It's amazing. It's going to happen, and it's a success. And we've taken that and we're looking at applying that process, not only publishing that process, but applying that process throughout other areas of Lake and Klamath County. And we're following, again, the Forest Service NEPA process, NEPA-ready projects. And we're, we looked at seven specific areas of private land-public land interface to do the same things and to meet the same, help meet the same goals in landscape management. And we looked at those seven areas all the way from the SiCann Marsh up north, Sprague River in the middle, and then down to Klamath on the southwest corner. And then, so what we've decided is to emphasize the two areas, east and west of Chilquun, and look at the SiCann Marsh area. But the rest of it is for the future. So this process works, and it's being used as a template not only for us and other areas of Klamath and Lake County, but also throughout the state. And Kale will talk about some of the benefits, the added benefits that have come about from this partnership and the efforts we're doing.
Before you leave this, is this going to be part of what you present here in a month or so at the conference?
Yeah.
In Reno?
In Reno.
And the only thing, just as a quick comment, because it's going to be critical to some decisions that are made in the next few days. I didn't hear cohesive strategy mentioned as part of their collaboration.
Okay.
Okay, that's a good feedback. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, again, so for the record, my name is Kale Graves. My official title's the Federal Forest Restoration Coordinator for ODF for Klamath and Lake Counties. So as you guys know, ODF traditionally, historically, until a couple of years ago, is focused on assisting private landowners and working on state managed land for the Board of Forestry, Department of State lands. But we have recognized recently that, you know, a lot of our efforts end when we hit the federal fence line, so to speak. And it's been brought to our attention by a lot of different inputs around the state that I think it's somewhere around sixty percent of state land ownership in Oregon State is federal, Forest Service mostly, so. So we've started meddling a little bit in the Forest Service business, working with Amy. In a good way. Yeah. Yeah, so a lot of the struggles come with working through the NEPA process and then implementing these federal projects. As we all know, a lot of federal funding has shifted toward fire suppression and away from preventative maintenance. So we've been trying to help out where we can with that. And something that I've been really interested in trying to get off the ground is the Good Neighbor Authority. So the Farm Bill designated the Good Neighbor Authority in 2014. So I'll just run through this for you about kind of how the Good Neighbor Authority works. Basically, essentially, the idea is that it's an authority. So this is not a government program. It's a tool we can use that allows state agencies to work on restoration projects on federal land. Our master agreement has the agencies on there, the Forest Service for Region Six, Oregon and Washington, Department of Fish and Wildlife, a state agency, and Oregon Department of Forestry. So these are the three agencies that can create a project agreement together and work together on these federal projects. There's a lot of different things that can be done on this. There's a pretty broad sweep in authority we can use. So some of the things we're looking at is helping to increase the pace of getting these NEPA-ready projects on the shelf, basically. So providing crews to collect data, providing specialists to help with the documentation and data collection for the NEPA process. And then also on the backside, once we have NEPA-ready projects, we can provide crews or Forest Service to administer contracts to actually get the work done. So we have, let's see here.
Hold on.
There we go. Okay, well, hold off on this. So we have a couple of projects right now, a couple of agreements we've gone into where we're actually going to provide crews to do some thinning work and some foresters to do some timber markings, some crews and that sort of thing. So something that should be, I want to keep clear is that these are still federal projects. They still have to go through the NEPA process. Forest Service still has a responsibility for the NEPA decision and for the project. Where it gets a little different is once we get into implementation, we can use some state processes. So for example, if it's a timber sale, and ODF is putting up a timber sale for the feds, all the NEPA documentation, the decision, all of that is on the federal government. But the process to actually put an timber sale up is just like a state timber sale. So we don't have to use tracer paint, we use our own contracts and contract templates. We advertise and auction the sale the same we would for a state land timber sale.
So Kale, before you go on, that's kind of interesting, I think that's a clear distinction. How would that work related to fire salvage? Is there opportunity to do the same thing and then work the contract under the state processes?
As far as I understand, there is an opportunity, yeah. But like I said, it would just be the same, it would have to go through the NEPA process or whatever the Forest Service has to do to get to that public comment period or whatever we have to do. But once the, yeah, once the sale can be handed off to the state, it's a state sale.
Okay.
So keeping on track of timber sales as an example, basically, so here's how it would work. So we sell the timber, just like a state sale, it's still federal timber we're selling to the Forest Service. We pay all the fees that the Forest Service requires for road maintenance, whatever it may be. We pay the appraised value of the timber that the Forest Service gives us. And in theory, that would be the minimum appraised value set so that we can retain the costs on the back end of that. So once the timber goes out, we collect the receipts and the state hangs on to that money. So the state can't use it for state projects or anything off of federal land. That money has to be used in collaboration with the Forest Service on that forest again. So for example, the Fremont-Wanema and Clamath Lake districts, we would keep that money, but we would turn it around and reinvest it on Fremont-Wanema National Forest.
So how does that impact the timber receipts for counties and schools?
Well, the appraised value, I'm assuming when that payment's made to the federal government, 100% of whatever it is, then that comes back in receipt sharing.
That's correct.
Of 25% back to the state that disperses it to the county and schools. Yeah. Okay. The problem, if there is one, is and it's not now, because we don't see, I don't think, sales going through above the appraised values. But when we do, from the description you just gave, that money wouldn't benefit the counties or the schools, the money above the appraised value.
Not directly, it wouldn't go, the, as far as my understanding, you can correct me if you mean, is that you're right, the appraised value, that money would come out of the appraised value that we, the state, is paying the Forest Service.
Yeah.
Of that. The, where I see the benefit being is that all of that, what we call program income, that excess, has to go back onto the land on the same forest. So essentially, if we sold the timber sale in the Warner Mountains on Forest Service land, it would go back to the Forest Service land in the Warrens, in Fremont or Wanema side of the forest.
Well, and that's what, just not to slow your presentation, Kale, that's what makes it a little sticky for commissioners, not just here, because we've supported stewardship, which doesn't provide for receipt sharing and many other things. But the sticky part is, is that we have to represent the interest of county governments that provide services through the receipt of those receipts and the benefit from that. And that is the reason, and I'll just editorialize for a second, that we want to get out of the receipt sharing business as a means of how we're compensated for those otherwise untaxable lands. So we all can use this tool to its greatest effect, not be hampered by county commissioners across the state that want to, you know, shut something like that down because it directly affects them and their constituents. But it's the wrong, it's the wrong program, and not what you're doing, but it's the wrong program in this day and age, the receipt sharing, because it gets in the way of the good work all of your trying to do. So.
That's, that's good feedback. Glad to hear that feedback from you. Get that kind of honest answer, a lot of honesty. Okay, so, yeah, a couple of examples we have, agreements we've already put in place. And these are actually the first two Good Neighbor Authority project agreements in, not only in Oregon, but in the Forest Service Region Six, so that would be Oregon and Washington. All right here on the Fremont-Wanema. One of them is for a little bit of monitoring, so tracking their prescriptions to see if they're needing a prescription, the operators, some timber marking, some cruising, just trying to fill those gaps where they don't have the personnel to go out and get that work done, basically. The other agreement is right up here in the Crooked Mud Honey project area. We've got 362 acres of thinning, both hand thinning by ODF crews and also some units set aside that we're going to contract out to an operator. Some future agreements we're looking at. So Paddock View, I'll have a slide for you in just a second to give you a little bit of visual for that. But Paddock View has been a really key component in KLFHP's mission right now. It's kind of our, one of our go-to projects that incorporates that all hands, all lands. We're using the Good Neighbor Authority, we're using NRCS funds on private land. It's a pretty cool deal. I'll just show you the picture and that, you know. Oh, see, I'm picking up someone else's slide here, so I've got to look at this. I'll just talk about this one. So Paddock View, I'll say on Paddock View. The other thing about that is we're using the CE authority, and I don't know how familiar you guys are with the insects and disease CE authority we have. But basically, just to sum it up, the Forest Service has an opportunity to utilize the CE rather than the full NEPA process on some of these projects if it's in a threatened area for beetle kill or insect damage. I'm just going to skip this slide and show you the picture. Okay, so Paddock View, this is, I don't know if you're familiar with some of the Livingston and Bruce properties out by L.A. So most of that yellow is their land, and they have some NRCS equip funding to get some juniper reduction work done on their land, piling, burning, that sort of thing. And then this Forest Service piece in the red boundary there, one of our stewardship foresters actually kind of picked up on this and suggested that we look into using the Good Neighbor Authority and the CE authority to pick up that gap between those private pieces. So essentially, what we have going here is the Forest Service is working really hard right now on getting through the CE authority and the NEPA process to get a decision on this piece of land. And then, once they have that, we can sign a project agreement and ODF is going to implement a timber sale and some restoration work on that Forest Service piece. So the idea being that we're going to have stewardship forester like Kelly or Jason on the west side will be helping the Livingston and Bruce families with the NRCS work as well as working on the Forest Service side, administering a contract to get trees cut on the Forest Service piece.
How close is the BLM land to that? It's got to be pretty close. Just for the sound there.
Yeah, there's BLM land bordering a fair amount of this.
And we did have a BLM individual at our last meeting that was going to look into combining forces as well.
Yeah.
So we're, we're trying to draw the full range of partners.
Well, I like the fact the group has really identified the connectivity of these projects, the value they do.
Very important.
And that's where the CE authority comes in, it's nice, is that these guys are really focusing on large landscapes to get through the NEPA process, and I think that's really great. They're getting a lot done, but it leaves, you know, some holes, especially some cracks in there. We can, as long as it falls up and all the overlays line up on the map, we can, the CE authority is one of the things we can use to really target smaller projects like this.
Okay, I'm going to hand it off to Matt now.
Thank you.
Do that. Thank you.
I'm Max Corning, District Conservationist with the NRCS Natural Resources Conservation Service here in Lake County. And I'll wrap this up in the next five minutes, will you? Wanted to talk about this ODF and NRCS agreement that we have at, for the state. The leadership came together, recognized that we needed help on forest issues, and the way to do that was with a cooperative agreement between the state agency and the federal agency. For NRCS, we only have one forester in Oregon, and she is our state forester in the Portland office, so she's spread pretty thin. So this agreement allows ODF to provide us technical assistance on forest inventory. Daniel already mentioned the preliminary work that was done, which will help us immensely also. We are, you saw the slide on the funding that's available. We went, because Amy was needing additional funding, the National Forest was on their Crooked Mud Honey, we went together to propose a, some funding for, through the Joint Chiefs initiative. And that came through, and we're very glad of that. So I have about $800,000 to put towards forest health projects in the North Warner focus area. And with the help of ODF, Kelly, and other service foresters that might come in to play, they'll help us with inventory work, treatment development for those non-industrial private forest lands. And we get into contracts through our environmental quality incentive program. That's where the funding through the Joint Chiefs will be funneled through that Farm Bill program. We will enter into contracts with these private landowners. And so there'll be coordination with ODF all the way through on technical assistance for those plans and contracts. And once a practice is implemented, they will help us on certifying those practices that they meet our standards and specifications through our practice specifications that we have. So.
Max, have we heard anything related to the Joint Chiefs, if that's going to be continued funding for the three possible year?
We haven't heard.
We're assuming that.
So, so we could point out beyond the four million that you showed with all the partnerships, the Joint Chiefs itself may end up being close to four million.
Well, for me, I proposed meeting two and a half million for a three-year period.
Right.
Through 19.
Yeah.
So, and.
Just for NRCS.
Just for the private lands.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the Forest Service, National Forest Service had.
Yeah, we requested quite a bit more and ended up getting less, so it's hard to know what we'll get, but I feel pretty certain we'll get money for another two years.
Great.
Well, yeah, we're still hoping that the, even though we're now going to have new chiefs for the NRCS and Forest Service at the national level, that they will still be backing us on all of this and carry through with those commitments. But at least 2017, we do have about $800,000.
Yeah.
Go towards the private lands. And this slide just shows everyone that is involved, all the partners, through the Clamath Lake Forest Health Partnership, representing the private landowners, but then we have all these federal and state and local governments, along with some non-government entities involved there. So it really is a collaborative partnership, trying to work on this forest health issue in Lake and Clamath Counties.
It's, thank you, Max.
Thank you very much.
Thank all of you, and I'll, I'm sure Commissioner Nurse has a comment or two to make, but, you know, I lived that life as a federal employee before and I won't go into my history, but I can appreciate, and that's why I think this board supports these efforts so much, not one of you are required to do what you're doing. You have your regular jobs and it doesn't require collaboration and working together and trying to be creative and figure out how to stretch the dollar and make the resource that much more healthy. So you're all to be committed for all of the hard work you do that literally you're not required to do, but you see the need, you are committed to the vision of a healthy resource for everyone. So I don't think we can, we can thank you enough for all that you do.
A couple of comments. The picture of the 54 years ago is pretty interesting to me. I have a sawmill background, so I see those big trees, I see dollars and renewable resources, what I see. And I seen in there a couple of big trees that probably should have been harvested 54 years ago. And those smaller trees that only 54 years, they went from this size to this size, they would have been this size. So active management that you guys promote, I very much support. The question, I'd really like for your partnerships, the collaboration and all that. I never heard anything, I know this is Clamath Lake, but I never heard anything, but we're 14 miles from the state border and where we had the Berry Point fire and it went into California. Are you guys a partner, are you talking with the forest on the California side and the private landowners, Amy? I know it's not Lake or Clamath Counties, but the trees and the fires and the diseases don't see that state border. Any comments or thoughts on that?
We have not yet, but I think that's a really good point. And I think if we work in a landscape that's adjacent to the California border, we should certainly be thinking about that.
Well, the Berry Point just showed us how fast it goes from here to there and impacts private, federal and everything, and it's, to just learn from the things that happened in the previous. But the thing, so it was, Dan has all the background in the fire and the Forest Service, and I'm still learning every day that, to hear people that sit here and say, 5,000 acre fire was huge 20 years ago, and now we're accepting 100,000 acre fires? I appreciate that you guys are trying to change that trend, trying to make it the right way, so appreciate that. Thank you guys, all of you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah, great presentation.
Yes, very good.
Okay, I will try and kind of stay on schedule here. Our next time item, it was a 9:45 item, will be the Edmunds Well Support Letter Request. Craig Foster, Department of Fish and Wildlife. Mr. Foster.
Good morning, Paul.
Good morning, how are you?
Good, every day's good.
So for the record, I'm Craig Foster, I'm the Forest Wildlife biologist for Lake County for Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. And this is a real short, no formal presentation, the Department of Forest Commissioners in January of both '16 and '17, bringing you up to date on our efforts to purchase the Edmunds Well property just north of Summer Lake. And the January 17 presentation, one of the things we obviously forgot was, we would like to request the letter of support from the county commissioners for this purchase. Since the January presentation, we've received one letter of support from Mr. Keona that owns the Summer Lake store, and we've had a couple of informal conversations with the locals up there. No opposition, lots of questions about details and management and what our vision is for how to be the grave, the refuse, or water management and things like that. But we haven't, we haven't heard any disagreement to the purchase from the Summer Lake community, and we've had a few, one letter of support since. We're requesting a letter of support from the commissioners as we continue this process. The next step is to go to the state legislators. There have been some informal discussions. Because the legislature, the state legislature is in session right now, everybody's pretty busy, there's been a couple of informal discussions and it's like, okay, well, let's get this, they'll take care of it. dealt with and care for. We'll get back to you on that. So, anyway, we are going to the commission to present the purchase to the Fish and Wildlife Commission in Clamath Falls on April twenty-first. That commit, our Wildlife Commission is meeting in Clamath on April twenty-first, and Marty Stinkless and I will be making a presentation to them to request their approval, formal approval to continue the purchase. So that's why I'm here this time.
Likely there's people in the audience that may have opened.
Sure.
I don't know, Mr. Chairman. Well, this, the, the agenda item was just to receive the request from the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife as far as the support letter. I think without any of one of us speaking for each other, you know, our, kind of our statement, number one, we've appreciated the updates as you went through the process, because that's, that's what you were coming to do, you weren't asking for our permission, you were just keeping us updated on what you were doing. I don't know as far as the Edmonds property and the conservation efforts that they've put into it over the years, if at the end of the day, regardless of due diligence, if that's going to be one of the requirements of purchase, you know, that, that may answer some, some questions that people have related to the state buying it versus somebody privately that would buy it. And as far as the support letter, Foz, I, I've said before, I support the idea of what you guys are wanting to do, but I'm deferring to our constituents and some late value that, the value that you referenced as far as, you know, would we, would we write a letter that said we were supporting it wholeheartedly versus supporting the community and the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and their, their work as a community and, and how, how that outcome comes about. I'm not clearly stating this, but if we do have a few comments here on whether or not we should be supporting this at this time, I, I would hope that you folks would have had that interaction already with anybody in the community that didn't support it. But I, I'm like Commissioner Winters, I think we have some folks here that have something to say on that.
Sure.
I don't know if we want to hear a few comments about it right now?
They, they can be.
Okay.
Whatever you want to do.
I'm fine with it, with you, I, I say we do have some, some folks in the audience what do you, do you like to?
All the public.
Say anything on this.
Hey. Tom McDonald from Desert Springs Trout Farm. We are absolutely opposed to this, and when I found out how much land is owned by the federal government in Lake County, to have one more piece pulled out and go into state or federal land is absurd. We've hired a bunch of people, I talked to Commissioner Winters about it, and he said for every one you hire, same as hiring three hundred in Portland. And we're expanding our projects here. When that land gets, if ODFW does get the land, it's gone. Nobody can come out there, start another business or anything, and, and so much land's being gobbled up and taken away by the government, it's got to stop, because Lake County needs the taxes and everything else to support our county. And when, when less than twenty percent of it is private and the rest of it's all federal, it's, it's nuts. And I'm trying to get a piece of B L landland, that's my property there. Well, it's absolutely impossible to do unless you've got something they want. And I happen to have forty acres out of Palina in a wilderness study area, only piece of private up there. So I'm in the process trying to do a trade with them, because I talked to you, the projects we're looking to do, and we need that forty acre. And I would really like to see the commissioners start for, start out putting some together with our senators, where we have access to buy government land back. There's nothing we can do about that, but yet they're moving forward all the time of wanting to buy more private land. And I was just talking to Tom O'Leary the other day, and he was over in Ontario, and they haven't harvested the corn over there, and he said, Tom, there was duck absolutely empty. We don't have any corn on the refuge in Summer Lake. Every year a duck population goes down, we're not doing anything to enhance it. And, and if they're not going to enhance the refuge down there, what do they need more property for? To, I don't know what they're going to do, because I didn't make the meeting, I was told the wrong day that they had up at Summer Lake, but they said they didn't really know what they were going to do with it yet. Well, if they don't have a vision of what they can do that's going to enhance the taxes in our county, I don't think that we should support any of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
My name's Morse Terry, I'm a builder in Summer Lake.
Hi, Morse.
And I kind of agree with Tom, I just don't like to see the land taken off of the, off of the tax rule, you know? Once we lose it, we'll never get it back. It seems to me like there's a lot of, there'll be a lot of road maintenance that doesn't get taken care of. I'm concerned about what we're going to do with the structures on the piece of property. You know, it, it just, I just don't think they need more land, you know? So, anyway, thank you, guys.
You're welcome, Morse.
Good luck.
Morning.
Hello, how are you today?
Good, my name's Lyle Nagus, I'm a resident of Summer Lake.
Yes, Lyle.
And I basically oppose for, for the reasons that these two gentlemen have already stated, that we've had, we need all the private land, we need access, other we can get, there's a water resource there that could be used for private business that would produce tax incomes for the, for the county, which I think we need more taxable land rather than less. Because once it, once it goes to the state, well, it might be on the tax rules, yeah, it's gone, it's lost money. And that's about all I have to say.
Appreciate that, Lyle.
Thank you.
Good to see you. I would like Foz to speak to that, because that was a question that was put to him related to the taxation part.
Do you want me to back up here, or you gotta get from right here?
Over here, come on.
Okay, so the department pays taxes, we do, the state has a what's referred to as the payment and low tax program. It's different than the federal government's payment and low tax. We pay farm deferral rate on all the property we own, we do not pay on structures, that's the way the statute's written. So currently, the tax burden on the Edmonds property is about thirty-four hundred dollars a year for, and, and we would pay thirteen hundred and seventy dollars, because that's the base property without the structures, okay? That's an assessed value that happens every year, it doesn't require any type of legislative approval. Just like all of us that own property in Lake County, we get a tax statement every year, we pay that tax statement every year. On the Summer Lake Wildlife Area, I can't remember what Marty told me the tax burden was, but that twelve thousand acres of DED ground that we own on Summer Lake Wildlife Area, we pay taxes on. So, will there be a change in the tax str, tax amount? Absolutely, there will be. But we're still going to pay taxes on that property. We still, and there's no irrigation district up there, there's no fire assessment up there on that north end of the basin, so we would, we wouldn't pay on that. If there was, if it was in any kind of state forestry protective area, a fire assessment, we'd pay that too on the properties that occur, like Murder Strick Wildlife Area, we'd pay twenty thousand dollars a year on fire assessment, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's the tax piece of it, okay? The management piece of it is so, it's going to be, we're, we haven't been able to come right out and say exactly what, how we're going to manage the property, because we're not foolish enough to say, this is the way it's going to be, we don't own it, if we own it, I'm sure we're going to get in the middle of it and find out that there's more going on there than we realize. But based on our knowledge of the property now, we're going to have a hunting program, it will not be, you know, seven days a week like the Wildlife Area. It's too small, parcel, there's too many close by neighbors. We, you know, Marty and I were just talking about this yesterday, our vision is, and take this with a grain of salt, because until you own it, until you know what you're going to, what the limitations are, this may change. But right now, we're thinking about a hunting program that looks like maybe two, not more than three days a week, a permit entry thing for one or two parties out there, a couple days a week. Similar to what happens on Clamath Wildlife Area, Sobbies Island, the other area that we own. The, we, we don't see a wide open, y'all come, non-consumptive use out there either, okay? So Wildlife viewers, things like that, we're going to have to structure some kind of limited entry thing, for no other reason than to protect, egress onto the neighbors, okay? We can see value for, because of the structures, we can see having it open for youth education, similar to what Donna Carroll has always done up there. The agency has a very active becoming an outdoor woman program, it would lend itself for those type of workshops, any other kind of outdoor school workshops, types of meetings where somebody in the community, somebody in the county, obviously somebody from OFW needs to have a meeting with, you know, ten bios over three days to develop the cougar plan, you know, or have a business meeting, that we would make those facilities available for that. The big question we've got right now, and it has nothing to do with, with fish per se, is we don't know how we're going to manage a fishing program up there. Donna Carroll had an active transplant program, I think they bought fish from you guys.
We donated fish, they didn't buy much fish.
Okay, well, irrespective of that, because most of the financial, the, the financial support, the management of the Summer Lake Wildlife Area is under the PR program and, you know, federal aid for restoration wildlife program, the eleven percent excise tax on arms and ammunition, that money is specifically earmarked for everything flat fish. And so if we, if we have any kind of fisheries program up there on the property, we got to figure out a different way to pay for it, we haven't had that discussion with Fish Division.
So it'd be a perfect place for a trophy fish program.
Oh, absolutely. But the question is, how do you pay for it and not get in trouble with your funding source? And we haven't got there yet.
Because you outside those.
Right, because, you know, it doesn't fit that program, and so that's the piece, we pretty much know where we want to go with the public use on the property if we purchase it. The fish piece, we don't have figured out at all.
Just not, you know, the boat off for my bass boat up there, that's it.
There you go. It's not like a pond, you'd be, like, your bass boat would almost touch both sides. Anyway.
So, Foz, you've given a pretty good description, but what I'm seeing here, develop, and it's , there's no problem, it's not like we're in a ready to go here or there.
Right.
But we've kind of got an impromptu state fish and wildlife public meeting with the community of Summer Lake that's kind of sprung up as a result of this particular item, which is good. But I'm more interested in sharing with, with Tom and Morse and Lyle, who all testified this morning, what means they have to oppose this, because we aren't the decision-making body on this.
Right.
The stadia's, and our state legislature folks, I think, are the ones that need to be hearing any of the opposition to the purchase.
Absolutely.
So, you know, we can work with you, if you don't have addresses, Denise has those readily on our website, and those who represent us for any communication you want to have on this. The Board of Commissioners is, you know, we, we represent you all, but no one's asking us to say yes or no as to whether or not it's a go. All we're being asked is, do we support it or not? And we want to, we want to truly, in my opinion, stay in that middle ground, because we do represent all of you, and we don't want to go at the, at a different end of, of support than what you as a community feel. So I'll kind of stop there.
Okay, so the next step in the process, April twenty-first, in Clamath Falls, the Oregon Wildlife Commission needs, and they're doing a bunch of stuff at that meeting, it's a two-day meeting, they need monthly, they, half of the meetings are out of Salem, and the other half of the meetings are in, in Salem. This meeting happens to be in Clamath Falls. We are presenting, similar to the, the public meeting we had at the Wildlife Area, at the lodge, we are presenting the purchase at that time. They will accept public comment at that time. So if you guys want to show up at this commission meeting in Clamath, I don't know where, it's going to be at OIT, but I don't know which room and all that. And I don't, haven't seen the agenda, well, they sent me the agenda, but I haven't looked at it, I don't know exactly what time on the twenty-first Marty and I are supposed to be up. It hasn't involved counting stage grouse, so I haven't been paying attention to it for the last week.
All right.
So, anyway, but April twenty-first in Clamath Falls at OIT, and I can get you the information if you want to go testify.
So, Foz, is this something that as you get that agenda with the actual location and the times, could be posted, like at the post office and?
Oh, it will be, absolutely.
And the lodge and et cetera, so that everybody in the community can see when that's going to happen.
Right. No, and I, you know, Marty and I were talking about that yesterday, when we've got the final agenda.
Okay.
It'll get posted.
Good.
Yeah, I've got, I've got another one for you guys. You know, we've been stocking Thompson, Duncan, all these lakes around here. Twenty eighteen, we're not going to be stocking anymore with ODFW, they've pulled the contract from us. And there's not going to be any contracts left for twenty eighteen, we'll do twenty seventeen. And the reason behind this is Army Corps of Engineers came out earlier and said they were going to go start buying from private hatcheries, and ODFW felt that we had our faders in it, which we don't have any say or control over, US Army Corps of Engineers, and there's to be a contract left here in just the next few days for the trout out of Leaver Hatchery. So ODFW, after awarding the contract, we didn't get it signed yet, because they slipped, they wanted us to buy a bond into it, but after awarding the contract, they pulled it from us, from Blue Den and from Berry Springs, pulled all of it. They're not going to buy any more fish from private aquaculture. So I thought I'd let you guys know that, that it's, we're going in for a big change here. We've been selling fish to them, and you were asking about the trophy fish, and that was one thing we've been ratcheting up with them in these lakes, is getting the one and two pound fish. And so I don't know, I, ODFW can't raise that size of fish. If their water's too cold, it's, they've got too many problems with it, and, but the Corps has pulled six hatcheries, I think they've given Coal River and one other hatchery back to ODFW, but it was a, basically a retaliation thing against private aquaculture.
So this is the Army Corps that's doing this?
No, ODFW is pulling the contract. We're looking to get the contract with the Army Corps of Engineers to stock the Wild Valley on the mitigation fish for, for the dams. They pulled it from ODFW, it's two hundred and seventy-seven thousand pounds a fish. They pulled it from ODFW, and we're working to try to get that now. It's supposed to be coming out to bid here shortly for delivery starting April tenth. But anyhow, ODFW canceled our contract, so there won't be, we won't be delivering fish to these reservoirs in twenty eighteen.
Wow.
And so you're bidding on putting fish in further on over on the west side?
Yeah, we're bidding, we're going to bid on, on the one with the Army Corps of Engineers that they pulled from ODFW.
No clue. This is, this is, first off, how obvious. This is, this is, first off, obviously, all of us local guys are just field bios.
Absolutely.
These types of contract decisions get made in Portland. Second off, I don't do fish. Once I've figured out how to set the hook and put them in a pan, frying pan of butter, I'm done with fish management.
Yeah.
I don't know anything about fish, so I, this is all news to me, Tom.
I've known, but-
This has been in the works for over three years with the Army Corps and ODFW, and what it came out, that it was really gonna do it. I mean, they, ODFW just went nuts over it, and it, it's a sad deal, is all I can say. We've been selling fish to ODFW for fifteen, sixteen years now. And, um, we already have the fish in the system, because we have to start growing fish for fifteen months in advance. And the contract didn't come out till February. When it did come out, there's a clause in there that said you can possibly have to be bonded. We got rid of that years ago. So, that was the first shot across our bow, they said you have to buy a bond. We already bid on the product. And all a bond is, I don't know if you guys ever dealt with them, but all a bond is, is you gotta have the asset, if something happens, pay the money back. Nobody has ten cents in these fish. We buy the eggs, we have to have two years in advance on the amount of eggs we're gonna get. We raise the fish at least fifteen months in advance. We get the contract, we deliver the fish to ODFW. Thirty to forty-five days later, we get paid. And they want us to have a bond, for what? They kill literally hundreds of thousands of fish, darn near every year. Lieber Hatchery, they killed two hundred thousand trout. One of their drivers was drunk, I don't know if you guys read about that, wrecked a truck full of spring-shipped salmon, killed all those. They don't have any way that, they have to produce fish if they go out and destroy them. But to come back and want a bond, because you're looking at five, six thousand bucks to buy this bond. It's not cheap. You already get approved for the bid, and then they say, well, you gotta have a bond now. And then a few weeks later, they said, oh, we're just canceling everything because of the deal with the Army Corps of Engineers. So, anyhow, the fish has been, we've been planting in your lakes around here. In eighteen, we won't be doing it.
I don't think that means that the lake won't be stocked.
But they won't be stocked with the bigger fish.
Well, I guess I, whether who's gonna stock, then it's not, I mean, do we have local stock?
I don't know that.
Yeah.
Some of the stocking happens out of Desert Springs officially by, this is much I do know. Some of it comes from ODFW hatchery stock, uh, climate hatchery and others. I don't know which ones, this is way outside my knowledge, but it doesn't mean that the reservoirs won't be stocked.
On an average, ODFW plants three to the pound fish. That's what their main planting is. We plant one and twos. In the California market, where eighty percent of our fish go in California, we're planting four to eight pound trout. And for the last fifteen years, we have tried to get a trophy program with Oregon. Senator Frank Morris was one of the main ones that has pushed, and you, we cannot get a trophy program, and we were working towards that, ODFW was moving more to two pound fish. And, uh, but when this thing come up, then they just, uh, pulled the contract. We already got the fish in the system for the eighteen contract, so it's gone. But I thought I'd let you guys know that.
Okay, well, it's not good to this.
And here's my other thing with Tom here. The, uh, the Fish Department is going to try to privatize six or eight of their hatcheries, because they're-
Army Corps of Engineers.
Yeah, it's on the Corps of Engineers, and they, they, they wanna privatize those hatches, hatcheries, so some private person can come in and buy it and run them. But they got so many diseases down there in the, in the Atlantic Valley, it's almost pitiful. So, it's gonna be hard for somebody that has to live up to the state laws, because Fish and Game doesn't have to, apparently. Uh, it's gonna be hard for him to do.
The one thing I'll say about this is, everything they can do to make it harder for us to supply fish, they have done. We have to have our fish certified every year, disease-free, before we can go into California or sell to Oregon or anywhere, we have to have certification. Years ago, ODFW used to certify, and they stopped that now. They won't give us a hand at all. We have to go to Washington to get our fish certified. We have to hire a veterinarian from Ben to come down to take the tissue out that needs to be sent in to, uh, to do it. Last year, we got ODFW, we paid them to do it for us. Once they found out about that, they said, nope, you can't do that, you guys gotta hire somebody. So, it's just been an ongoing battle, and like I said, eighty percent of our fish go to California. Much easier to do business with, contracts are way easier to deal with. And, and to have an agency take it when you already have the fish in the system, growing for them, and then say, well, you need a bond, and then, well, we're just canceling. There's a clause in the camp, in the contracts, that they can cancel thirty days notice with no reason. We've tried for years to get this, 'cause we raised a live product. You just can't take it and go sell it to somebody else. And just not been able to crack the nut up there, so...
Sounds like, Tom, when you get this, at a later date, have a meeting with someone like Senator Lethinkin.
I would be tickled if you-
Representative Warner, well, let it be your meeting.
Yeah. Now, I will be up to the, I will be up to Capitol on the twenty first to testify, and, uh-
Twenty first of this month?
Yes, yes.
Have you arranged for a meeting with either of those two gentlemen?
Yeah, I've got, I have my own lobbyist hired up there, we have, that's the way to do this.
Really, Representative-
Yeah, Representative McLean.
Yeah, Mike McLean, I see him every time I go up.
So, when I mentioned the trophy program, I was trying to build a relationship between you and, and the state, and maybe find a way to be supportive of this, this, and, and a partnership. We always talk partnerships, Tom. So, it's quite an education, I've got some of this education from you before on, on all this, but, um, I, I wasn't one to crucify ODFW or you guys or anything, I'm just trying to think. If this land exchange happened, what kind of local partnerships could be built and supported? It's where I was going when I talked about the trophy program there. I mean, that would have to be an economic boom for that little community of, if you could advertise that you have six, eight pound trout, and you've limited, limited entry or whatever, you'd come pivot. I'm a bass guy, I'd rather see large amounts of bass in there.
Well, we just got an eighteen pound striper, or wiper out of Summer Lake. It was in the, on the, online, you got, they got a picture of it.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, but the one thing I will say is, Desert Springs is one of, it, it's, how many crater lakes do we have? We have one. There's only one Desert Springs. There's not any place else that's got the clean water, disease-free, that Desert Springs does. And it's, it's just a shame that something like that, and we have to battle an agency that has a different agenda. It, it's, it's just absolutely insane. And their contracts, they've got a full paragraph in there about they can't be held accountable for anything. We just did a thirty-some thousand dollar contract with Cowfish and Game, purchase order. So, all they did is send a purchase order up. They just called, day before yesterday, and said, uh, or, uh, Friday, last Friday, they called and said, hey, we picked up another sixteen thousand bucks, can you sell us the fish?
Wow.
And, and it just, and that bond, when we had that bond in place, when they made us do it, and they did make us do it for years, and it was over, it was a two hundred thousand dollar bond. They wouldn't let me drop one penny off that bond as we delivered the fish. For two years, we battled with them. So, at the end of the contract, if I had two hundred pounds of fish to sell to ODFW, at the end of the contract, something was wrong with them, they didn't like it, they go back and get the whole two hundred thousand dollars. But they don't have ten cents in it, so it's just some, another way to, to stick you, I guess. The easiest way to do.
Well, I definitely understand the frustration you're feeling. What I'd like to ask of you, and then we're gonna have to move on-
That's fine.
-in this discussion, is when you meet with those folks at the legislature, Mike McLean as, as well as Senator Lethinkin, if it's possible, because we'd like to be in the loop, I think, on what's going on.
Absolutely.
Is to have them reach out to us, Commissioner Winters or myself, please ask them to do that if you will.
I'll see Senator Perrioli too, and I'll get one.
Yeah, okay.
And we tried, last time I missed, but you invited them all out here, so they can hands-on, see your place and everything.
Oh, yeah.
Get that arranged, if time allows, I'd love to get out there with the Senator, Representative, to show up.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much, all of you. Yeah, sorry about our-
Thank you, Foz.
Thank you, that.
Thanks, Foz.
We'll see ya.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm here with Public Health, and, um, I just am asking for your approval of the, um, cocoon contract proposed for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, that year. This isn't contract we've had, as long as I can remember, as Public Health. And the cocoon program provides services for, um, most of the disabled children, so...
Now, the, the plus thing is, is it just the amount, it says the plus four thousand five?
Yes, that's the amount of the, yeah, that's the amount of the, um, the word in the contract.
The total contract?
Yeah, the contract, it's a grant award.
Well, we have a, we don't have one. We do have one, most of them.
For approval, conditional questions, you've sent to Legal Counsel and Senator.
Yeah, Senator Legal Counsel, and it's the same contract we've had. It was the same as last year, which I don't, I don't believe it's changed much.
And then it was just the formality?
Yes.
Well, we appreciate your patience today.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it. Have a good day.
Okay, next up, we have the American Tower lease amendment. Mr. Berman.
Morning, Mr. Berman, good morning.
How are you, gentlemen, this fine morning? We are nice, early. Here, we're the team. Uh, American Tower, American Tower gave us a, a proposal, a proposal that just would be on a amend, amending the agreement that we're already in with them, as far as the black cap. So, they have the tower up there, and they wanna offer us a one-time payment of seventy-five thousand dollars for, to go into, uh, agreement with them for four years. Uh, with, with continually monthly, they pay us bill monthly payment for the cell site of six point two and progressive, so many years, so forth and so forth.
So, they have the escalation factor in it, which is built in for, for, over forty years, so it keeps going on?
Yeah, usually, every five years, and every five years, we, well, what is it? Every five years automatically goes into a new, uh, agreement in that, yes.
So, under, under this proposal, this is just being an extension of the existing, by that four years you're talking about, the extension wouldn't happen until twenty twenty-four, that new four-year one lease?
So, it's two thousand twenty would be our first, and it's not on that. We started a, uh, 'cause the, the agreement we're gonna do right now goes to two thousand twenty-four, and that's when we have to renew, we just renewed the agreement last year. So, that's why we went from the existing contract on, 'cause we already knew it was gonna grow up to eight hundred and some odd dollars a month till, uh, two thousand twenty-four. That makes sense.
So, every, every five years, the, the, it'll be higher cost.
Right, like, right now, it's six point two, in two thousand twenty, it'll be around seven hundred something, and then two thousand twenty-four will go up to eight eighty-six, and then so on and so on.
That's where the figures, that was those, these, the missing ones, that's the seven hundred something as it goes up to two, two thousand twenty.
And it, it, it's just, I think it's a, it's a, my opinion, I guess, it would be, it'd be a good opportunity for the county, uh, those dollars will go into general fund. It'll also give us opportunity to put, um, tell us some bridge issue with our railroad, if we would like to, we have to fix bridges, and, you know, just kinda help leverage the dollars we need to go there to borrow, to get our bridges.
Well, the only thing I, I guess I would say, 'cause we've talked about this, Dave, is that, you know, who knows what a fair amount, especially on a one-time payment. But the fact of the matter is, this is substantially better than what we've done in the past. We've been more engaged in that process, and, and as we have these leases, those are our opportunities to, you know, protect our citizenry by getting fair value and so forth. And I don't know, uh, that this is nothing but fair value. I mean, that's, I don't know.
Right.
Uh, you and I talked about when they first came, had a much lower amount that they wanted to be, we were able through you to get this up to where it's at now, so...
If you look at over the length of it, it's gonna be total value, roughly guessing, two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and four million dollars over the actual time it is. It was at seventy-five thousand. And, uh, I, I think I'm going the same place as you, Dan, is that, uh, this is so much better, and this is kudos today, we're managing our sites up there, and, uh, just giving away agreements. Um, they, they came to us, and one of them, for now, from Dave's negotiated seventy-five thousand dollars upfront with a long-term agreement with an escalation, that escalating factor in there. Thank you for that, Dave. As far as, you know, um, there's a certain amount of money to keep in one fund, the seventy-five thousand initial payment, plus the seven hundred something dollars a month, goes into general fund, but the conceptual thought is, we have a need over here on our railroad, is, I know where your mind is going, is that maybe to offset some of the costs on the bridges and everything there, as you're trying to think of ways to leverage dollars there. Whether we've done that as a loan from general fund or an outright payment from general fund, it does bring in some dollars for at least that thought. So, thank you for looking progressive in, in what you're doing here. Um, I reviewed the lease, the legal counsel, I have a couple questions for legal counsel that we talked today about this morning. Um, but I, thank you for giving it, that's just a monthly, small fee, basically. And, uh, Dave and I talked this morning, and I, I mean, thirty years ago, there was, uh, you're lucky if anybody had a bag of phone for, uh, for cell phones. Forty years, I would think that cell towers will be outdated and cons, so we might as well take the money today and run, because I, I think they're gonna get out of this sometime.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah. The only question I have, Dave, and we can talk about it later, because we'll be looking to approve this tomorrow, is when I look at the bottom line, and these are monthly figures, these are monthly rental, if we just dealt with twenty twenty-five, and we'll just stay in the seventy-five thousand dollar upfront payment category, I'm not sure what those, what the numbers are supposed to be down below, the one forty-eight, four eighty-five, and the seventy-three, seven, the forty-three, or seventy-three, four eighty-five.
I don't, I don't have to look into that.
Yeah, 'cause when you, when you take the monthly amount, say, in the last five years, it's, it's over, it's pushing, I'll just round it to forty, forty thousand a year. So, you add up the last five years, that's two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, and I, like, now since I'm actually-
I think we'll just have to multiply any of those numbers times twelve. I think it's just a total of eight, eight, eight a month.
Yeah, because I just went those numbers, that's way off, because if you do it by monthly amount, you're talking, with the seventy-five thousand, you're talking almost half a month, just averaging it out at seven twenty a month for-
I, I never turned out that way.
Yeah, probably.
We, we need to-
So, my numbers are all wrong.
Yeah, we'll, we'll clear that out between now and tomorrow, so we can have that.
Yeah, and also, where they got that map.
Yeah, 'cause that's, I'm pretty sure, just the monthly amount, for eight a month, a month, not for twelve months.
Now, my numbers are getting real scary, I'm way off.
Strike all those numbers.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, so we have to retire. Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Mr. Collins. You have-
Mr. Collins, you have the rest of the regular agenda items, and I for one would like you to start wherever you want.
Okay. I would like for him to start five minutes from now.
Okay. We can do that, too. Break at ten thirty, and we'll hope to come back at ten thirty five.